Let the records reflect that all members are here, one way or another. Jim, Bill, you good? Jim, you're good?
I'm good.
All right. Each member should receive the minutes for... Is that correct?
No, June 30th.
It should be June 30th. Corrections and additions since I was unable to make that meeting?
I did not get a copy of the minutes.
You didn't either.
Okay, Bill. You make that a motion, Bill?
No, I'm sorry. I was...
Look for a motion for approval.
I mean, we accept the minutes from last month.
May 20... June 30th.
June 30th.
June 30th, yeah.
Yeah.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
I'll second.
Yes. Second by Bill. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approval, single five is saying aye.
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 Got you, Bill. Okay. Carrie, thank you.
I was gonna say...
I was watching for the thumbs.
I'll be really...
Actually, I was waiting for Jim, but I just...
[laughing]
We're good. We're good for that. Okay. Delegating action items. Request for concept approval for City of Torontown Public Work Facility on Allendale Lane. Jim, you want to lead us off on that since...
Sure, and I think I caught a glimpse of the gallery that...
Yes.
Okay, so, yeah, it looks like we have Kyle and Corey there, I think, but, okay. So, last month, we did the presentation of the public work facility proposed for Allendale Lane. While the plan is far more detailed than we're used for a concept plan, we are here asking for concept plan approval this evening. So, even though you've probably already sent some review letters, this is just concept approval. So, and also, I will put a plug in that this is another one of those projects that with their being subdivision plan, or no new street created for the project, we tend to go right from concept to final on this one. And if the commission is willing to do that, we could also make that part of the... But tonight, we'll hopefully form a group.
Thanks, Steve.
Questions? We have folks from Morton Building. Address anything at least specific to the building.
All right. As I say, I've got questions, but not necessarily for y'all.
All right. Please, go ahead, Harry.
What... Can I get a definition of what, if we approve the concept, what does that mean for the process and everything else?
That means they can move forward.
Okay.
With funding, obtaining funding. Jim, you want to pick up here?
Sure. Concept approval is just letting the plans move through the process. It doesn't obligate the city to actually build it. I know there's been a lot of concern with the current council and the proposed cost of the facility. But we have already paid for the design, so we may as well get it through the process at least.
How long will this last? I mean, is it for five years, or one year, or how long?
The approval on the concept plan will last for, was it one year with an extension?
Right, so as long as we are back with the preliminary plan within a year, and really, what's been done is essentially a preliminary plan already. But concept approval is good for a year. Within that year, the developer has to submit the preliminary plan.
Can I answer your question?
Yeah, I'm just throwing it out that, like he said, there is... I would hazard to say little to no chance of it getting through as it is at the moment, at the council level. But...
Our responsibility is the concept plan approval.
Okay.
As far as what the council decides.
I was gonna say, yeah, because there hasn't been any money allotted or anything at the moment, other than what's done for now.
What if I am?
Go ahead, Bill.
Well, if I understand what Harry was saying, is if we approve the concept, it just gets you to the next step for to look into funding and everything else, right, Jim? Is that how that...
So, the city has already contracted the design of the site.
Okay.
So, whether the construction gets funded is the big question. So, we are already in the midst of the site development plan process, but the current council has a lot of questions about funding, and as Harry indicated, there's really little appetite right now to fund the project. So, what we'll need to do at the city level eventually is determine if we come back to the commission seeking final approval before we have a funding, before we have final approval or not, because we don't want to get final site plan approval and then have council not fund the project, and then we lose our approval after a year. So, we have a lot of proceedings to have at the level of the mayor and council.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments or questions?
Just, yeah. So, when I read the magic bible here, so it says that we get the plan presented to us, which that happened last month. Then it says the zoning administrator will complete a study of the... And at this meeting, the zoning administrator will present that study for us to review. And then, with that information, we were better to... We may vote on the approval of the proposed concept plan. So, I guess, you're just... What you just told us, is that the zoning administrator's study?
That's all I've got at this point.
Okay.
Were I able to dedicate the time to the zoning position, you would get a written report.
Okay, yeah, and that's fine with me.
It would talk about the zoning, the proposed use being consistent with the comprehensive plan, and within the city's, in this case, city's capital improvement program and things like that.
Right.
Very, very high level, the impact on water and things like that.
Right, right. And so then it says there's a... Like, five items that we're supposed, the commission's supposed to consider. Will create any inadequacy to a street, okay?
Andrew does, no.
Inadequacy to a public school, no.
No. Andrew, all those, I believe, is no at this point.
Inadequacy to fire protection, I don't know about that. I assume no. Police protection, emergency services, recreation facilities, water facilities, and sewage facilities. So, I guess I'm assuming that's a no also.
And how's the environmental, or the environmental comprehensive plan, Carroll County Water and Sewer Master Plan? So, we talked about that. And then talks about deeds. So, I think according to that...
Basically, the zoning covers most of that.
Yeah, so I guess my understanding is that when that happens and when we say, yeah, okay, on the concept plan, then we're supposed to send out copies to the county for review, but I think that's already happened.
That happened way before this happened.
So, we didn't follow the order. That's my only point, is we have it written down, but we never really follow it. But other than that, I have no issue with the concept.
Okay. Any other comments?
I have a comment. On your safety, because it's on a dead end where, have they considered that yet?
Jim, any comments on Allendale Lane? There is a lot of possibilities there, and I like to talk about them when we talk about our comp plan. But eventually, originally, I should say, it's supposed to be connected to the bypass.
He told me 40 years ago we were getting a bypass, and we haven't got one yet.
We're still here.
Yeah, and we haven't got one yet, so...
Well, as far as safety goes, only, I mean, the issue is that we're gonna have hazardous materials in the area, and you only have one exit in.
Yes.
So, that's...
You have a train going by, something happens, it always carries propane. You have a bad wreck out at the entrance. I mean, it's a lot to consider. Well, never, we're not building on the other end, we're building out there.
All right. I don't understand your point, but anyway.
And I think they will have a couple more parking spaces. I think that's inadequate, because we have a classroom for 40, you have 10 employees. I think they need some more parking.
Jim, I think you addressed that the last time, or actually Randy addressed it.
Yes, can't clear out when everybody carpooling either.
10 employees.
This is the concept.
Mm-hmm.
You're right. We're here to... Other comments?
Sir.
Yes, sir. Bill?
I'm good.
All right. Motion for or against concept plan approval?
I make a motion for the, to accept the concept plan. I think the plan that we presented addressed all the issues. Other items like safety, we can address at the next level before the preliminary plan.
Is there a second to that?
I second.
Second by Bradley. Any further discussion? Comments from the floor?
Crystal, New York Street, addressing your comment about the dead end. On that dead end street already, you have Kraft Mart with, you know, with a lot of wood and a lot of... They have a lot of issues in terms of, you know, combustible items. And you've got that other, that steel shop right there at the corner, and then you've got Rills Shop over on the other side, and all of those things are on the other side of the track and on a dead end. So, to single this property out, I don't think does justice to that. And then something else that we may want to consider as we talk about the comprehensive plan is if we put the Public Works Building there, is there any thought to connecting Allendale on through to Mill Street? So, just something to think about. Thank you.
Or that easement right before 54th Avian Road. There's an easement going back to the substation.
Yes.
That's only, and that's on this side of the track. And it's on this side, the stream. So, there's options there we need to look at when we start looking at the maps.
So, the comment on extending the street makes good sense to me, but your comment, because there's other properties back there, means this is okay. I don't really agree with that.
Bones don't make it right.
All right. All those in favor of a motion for approval, single five is saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, single five is saying nay. Motion carried. Thank you, folks. Did you have any comments before we move on?
At our last meeting on June 30th, there was a question on the height, the overall height of both buildings.
Thank you. Yep, thanks.
I did end up getting those for you. So, the main municipal building, that structure to the peak is 30 feet, one inch. The salt barn on top of the poured wall, the overall height is 36 feet, two inches.
Okay.
Cool. Thank you very much.
Not a problem.
You all have a good night.
Before or when we meet again, we may have the option to go from this stage to final. And as far as I'm concerned, that's gonna all depend on if all the questions has been answered from the county and the other agents. Jim, you okay with that? Yep. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, Board of Appeals case 2025-231125 Commerce Street variance. Jim, you want to...
Sure.
Phil, is this, start with, is this R 6,000?
I believe it's R 7,500.
7,500.
7,500.
Yeah. So, corner lots get a double front yard requirement. So, this would require this corner lot that's on the corner of Reverton and Commerce Street to have basically two 35-foot setbacks, one from Commerce and one from Reverton. So, when you think about our standard setbacks in the district, the front yard requirement is 35 feet, so you need to have the house set 35 feet back from, say, Commerce Street. If you then also had to set it 35 feet back from Reverton, and you also have to allow for a 10-foot side yard setback, you're left with five feet to build your house. So, these lots were created in, I believe, the 1920s, long before the R 7,500 district was created. And this area was carved up into a lot of 35-foot wide lots. Many of those have been replatted over the years. For example, Maryland Avenue and much of Reverton Street and Ridge Avenue. But there still were handfuls of lots that were not replatted with those substitutions. And this is the last couple of those lots, I believe. You may recall, had a hearing for some lot on Ridge Avenue not long ago, where they had four 25-foot lots, and they wanted to line them into two 50-foot wide lots. But again, that still didn't meet the minimum square footage, so they had to go to the Board of Appeals. This is two more lots kind of like that. But in this, they have that front yard requirement, so by reducing the equivalent front yard from 35 feet to 10 feet, it gives them the ability to build a house, say, facing Commerce Street, so it would be 35 feet back from Commerce Street, and then have a 10-foot side yard on either side, instead of a 35-foot side yard on the Com, on the Reverton side.
The setback they're asking for is on the Reverton side, right?
Yes.
That's what I thought. Yep, okay.
To go from 35 to 10, is that what you...
Yes.
I thought I read in there something about a driveway.
Yeah, there was a driveway too. So, the house has got to face Commerce Street, correct?
That would be my assumption, with the way the, just the proportion of the lots. I don't see how it can otherwise. If you were to reduce the setback from 35 to 10 on Commerce and have the house face Reverton, you have a 35-foot setback, and then you've got a 25-foot rear yard setback, and you've only got 50 feet to work with. So, it just doesn't fit that way.
Who, who?
So, the, the code specifies when asking for a variance, it's supposed to be the minimum variance that you can request to meet the needs to develop the property, or to build what, you know, what you're trying to build. And you can't have brought the hardship on yourself, that sort of a thing. So, again, lots be existing long before our zoning. The minimum variance would be to reduce that Reverton double front yard requirement from 35 feet down to 10. That would let you build a house, maybe not as big, but facing Commerce Street, a 10-foot side yard on either side. And, you know, it would probably be oriented to be a deeper house than wide. But I would anticipate it facing Commerce Street.
That would be a 35-foot setback from Commerce Street, right?
Yes.
But the house next to it is 22 feet back. I think all the houses down there are in line at roughly 22 feet. Their house would be set back from the rest of the...
But it's also a corner, so...
I know. So, that corner makes it difficult in one way or the other. I just want to call to your attention that it will not be in line with the rest of the residents. That's not what they're asking for. Comments?
We can certainly share with the Board of Appeals that the commission observed adhering to the 35-foot front yard setback would not match the other homes along Commerce Street. And they may wish to take other action, and we can certainly contact the lot owners before the hearing.
Okay, I'm okay with that.
So, you would be, you're saying we want to face Commerce Street? We want it lined up with the other houses?
Yes.
And the distance to the side street on Reverton could be as low as 10, 10 foot? So, then the question I have is, what did they say about the driveway?
Just that they're gonna propose a driveway, but I don't, I guess the driveway's gonna, well...
It would be...
Doesn't necessarily have to face Commerce Street.
Right. You want better put it on either side of the house, right? So, maybe they need to be 35 foot so they can park in front of the house.
What are the rest of them doing down there?
You know, I really didn't notice the houses, the vehicles, how they were parked.
I think they park on the street.
Yeah, there is, there was a lot on the street, and I don't remember what, if they had any garages on there.
A lot of those houses, there is no parking. Driveway there beside a couple of them.
In the front?
Currently requires any dwelling to have three off-street parking spaces.
Well, I mean, some of the houses at the other end don't have that. Tom Morrison parked on the side, then the next house up, there was no parking. And the next house up, Derek had to put in a, he put in a driveway, because there never was one there. So, a lot of those houses, I don't think have parking. Yeah, so I guess, for me, I just would, I'd like to know about the parking before I said, made a recommendation as to... Because if they're gonna park in front of the house, I don't think 22 foot is really what we want to say to...
I was trying to remember if there's sidewalks there.
Yeah, there is sidewalk.
Both sides are rued?
Well, it's on Google Maps, anyway. Oh, there's no sidewalk. There's a sidewalk in front of the house beside it.
Beside it, yes.
They'll be required to put a sidewalk, including both the house. That's part of our use and occupancy inspection.
All right.
They have a sidewalk there.
Just a quick thought on parking. They could have a driveway off Reverton Avenue, even though the house faces Commerce Street. However, dressing property might be a problem then, because the county emergency services likes the property address to be for the street where the vehicular access is. So, if driveway is on Reverton, county emergency services would prefer the house address to be Reverton, even though the front of the house might face Commerce Street.
Right.
And we have that with corner lots scattered around the city, that because the driveway is on one street, even though the house faces a different street, the, you know, the street address is the, what you would consider the side yard in some cases.
And just, as a, if this is to scale, the house next door is 35 feet back. It's not 22. So, it...
If it's about scale?
So, if this drawing is to, is to any kind of scale, at least to itself, then, then it's, then it should be about 35 feet back. So, it... Well, you have a convenient 25-foot markings in the, in the lot there. You can just kind of put that and come up with about 35 foot. So, yeah, it, so it, I think 35 is gonna put it right in the realm with everybody else, so...
But the bottom line for me, I'm okay with 35 off of Commerce Street and 10 off the side for me.
Yeah.
That's what they're asking for.
That's what they're asking for, so...
All right, make it a motion.
I'll move.
So, there's a recommendation for the...
Recommendation for the Board of Appeals.
So, the motion is a positive recommendation to the board?
Yes. Well, as soon as I make this vote, all those in favor of a positive recommendation to the Board of Appeals, single five is saying aye.
Technically need a second, but...
We did second it. One of you first and one of you seconded.
Okay.
So, we have the first and a second.
Okay, we're good.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who's nay? Carrie. Bill, I didn't see you on your thumbs up.
I got knocked off, I got knocked off of there, but I'm good.
Who motion, who made the motion and who seconded?
I'll be first, I'll be second.
Harry made the motion.
I'll be second.
And Maher seconded. And do we know when the Board of Appeals meeting is? Has that been scheduled?
I want to say it is August 27th.
Ordinants in agreement for reviews, none. Jim, your comments?
It is the 27th. I just wanted to double-check that for the Board of Appeals. Okay.
And 7:30, right?
Yes, right. Okay. Let's see, not a whole lot new. On the zoning front, I guess the only thing of note is some ongoing activity with the Mountain Brook Farm project in terms of conversations crossing the flipper property for the bypass. We will, the mayor and I will be meeting with the developer and their attorney the first weekend, August. I have the date right up front for me. But the idea to make a presentation to Flowserve's management team to try to convince them to grant an easement across their property. And they have asked for a number of things in consideration of granting easement, most of which have to do with things that would benefit their employees. So, it looks like they're still considering giving it to us with some, perhaps not direct monetary compensation, but with the developer and/or the city doing some things that would be beneficial to their employees. They are also for us to consider some updates to our zoning code that might allow something more of an employment-type campus within the restricted industrial. Again, going back to that, for their employees, the idea of having daycare center proximate to the employment center, you know, close to Flipper for the employees, is something that was discussed. Also, the idea of ensuring that solar panels will be used on the undeveloped part of their site to help offset the power that Flowserve uses was discussed. So, they're looking for some, some things that would be beneficial for their employees, and also some flexibility in our zoning considerations for their use of the remainder of the property. So, we kind of need to put together some, I'll say, points for Flowserve and team. And hopefully, we will be meeting with them next month or two in hopes of securing an easement across the Flowserve property. So, until that is, they're not moving that project forward. And that's really... And that's really the only update that I've got for you all this month.
Hey, hey, Jim.
Yeah.
It's been on my mind for a while, um, who's, who's helping us on a legal standpoint on, on, on this stuff? Since Jay has, has left, just asking, it's been on my mind, I think it's the other people who have been asking, who have been wondering too. I mean, this, Jay did a lot for us, and what are we doing with it?
So, eventually, the mayor will nominate a firm or individual to be the city attorney. In the meantime, uh, Mr. Gallow has agreed to work with us as our special counsel on specific projects that I ask him to work on. So, he's still in the picture, and he's still involved with our own building projects, uh, but he is not officially the city attorney at this point.
Understand, I just, it's just been certain things as this, this project here, I think there's some guidance that he's always, he was doing a lot behind the scenes, and I think we should have someone, cuz we're not lawyers, and nobody, so we don't wanna stub our toe on anything, that would be my concern. So, that's good, good news, that Jay, Jay's gonna help us out, great, thanks.
And I think, I think we're moving in the right direction, but at least you have a meeting now scheduled.
Yeah.
So, there is movement, which is good.
Yeah. Everything's taking a good bit longer at this point, but we're trying not to drop any of the rules.
Did that conclude your project comments?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Anything from Tiffany, is she, she didn't come on, so does she send anything up?
Uh, she did touch base last week, she said there's really nothing particularly notable to share with you guys this month.
I guess, not hearing anything else. Moving on to old business, the comp plan, our last meeting we had. Comments on that?
A spirited discussion was had by all.
Might have been some tension there.
I, I didn't get to watch it yet, I mean, the, the section on the housing, I mean, do we like approve it to move on, or is there?
There was a lot of changes made in, well, not a lot, but there was a few. I guess we'll talk about that at our next meeting.
Okay.
They did seem to incorporate pretty much everything that we had said the prior time when that, when housing came up, um...
Go ahead, Harry, tell, tell, tell us about the punchline, tell him about the punchline.
Which punchline? I had a couple.
The, the brick and the mortar.
Oh, no, I was gonna say, I put, I put in there about a brick and mortar with a, with a, with a one-acre lot, but, uh, that's cuz he wasn't here, so I had, I filled in for him. But, uh, um, but no, I, the, I was gonna say, the, I think the more, more of the discussion was happened, happened on the others, on the other br, side, the, the municipal side.
Right?
I, I did get a copy of the, uh, the online version, but I haven't opened it up yet, so thanks for that, but I haven't opened the link yet.
You're gonna have to do it in section, you're gonna have to schedule it in sections.
There's a lot to read.
A little light reading.
In old business? In the other business? Comments from the floor? Comp plan meeting is August nineteenth. Twenty-fifth. Motion for adjournment?
Adjourn.
Motion made by Bradley for adjourn?
Second.
Seconded.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
I need a second from someone else.
I'll second.
Seconded by Bill. Further discussion? All those in favor of adjournment, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no, it's Carrie, thank you, thank you, Bill, thanks, Jim, enjoy your vacation, Jim.
Great, guys. See you, guys.
See ya.